Okay, good afternoon. Meeting is called back to order for our one item for open and formal session this afternoon, item 2.01. For a couple of years now, of course, we have been working on our educational plan with Mr. Richter, and today we are excited to receive this updated report on some of the very important matters related to the plan. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. Item 2.01 will consist of, as mentioned, educational planning update in partnership with DeYoung-Richter and the education facilities planning process that has been before us for a period of time, and I'll just make a couple of brief statements. The board will recall, we started the process, I guess approximately a couple of years back, after the board adopted the spirit of the transformation initiative for us to move forward. Many steps have been taken since then in terms of moving in that direction with the new schools that are being built and how to move forward in a way that we open up choice and equitable, high-quality opportunities for all students across all subgroups. And so we, along with working with the board, the governor's leadership team, decided to work very carefully and do that in phases. And so today, this afternoon, we're excited to give you an update in terms of where we are, the work of the steering committee with DeYoung-Richter, and I think you're going to see that, in my view, there are some pretty exciting opportunities that are going to be afforded to the division for consideration moving forward and implementation to make Norfolk Cornerstone as division states of a proudly diverse community. And so with that, I'll defer to Mr. Richter to begin and kind of plug in from there.
Thank you, Dr. King. Chairman Houston and members of the board, thanks for inviting me back. We have what I think is a real exciting plan moving forward. I think that I want to go through a couple of talking points. I'm going to try to keep my presentation a little shorter because I really want to get in the depths of your conversation, your questions. We're going to present to you kind of two directions today as far as recommendations moving forward. And with that, though, I want to look back a little bit to last year's recommendations and what's been accomplished. You know, some grade pairings that are going to prove to be very successful. We believe that the primary learning centers are going to provide that opportunity for literacy and numeracy success before walking into intermediate education, and so we think that's a really great step in the right direction. In the spirit of that, we do have some of this recommendation today will be in that, in the spirit of that. The other thing, you know, with the reduction of seats last year by closing Lafayette Winona and now what is going, what is proving to be a very successful recruiting model of diversity and choice program at Lakewood allowed us to, you know, drop about 1,300 seats at the middle school level in capacity. We're going to gain a few, a couple hundred back, but we still have some reduction to do, and we know we do. We are not going to, at this time, propose a reduction for next year, and there's a couple of reasons for that. And I kind of want to get in front of this because I know it'll be part of the discussion. I think that the, all of the movement that's happening right now on the facility side and program side is a lot. I think when we step back and think about, I mean, you're in it day-to-day, and so we may take for granted all what's going on. You're in the middle of four construction projects. You have just repaired, you know, put, you know, four grade pairings, our four schools together in different grade pairings. You're on the cusp of going into a career in technical high school. You know, you're opening a brand-new choice middle school. Well, let's take a breath a minute just to kind of consume that, because that's real. And to think about, and right now at the middle school level, you know, we went out and reviewed Blair Middle School as a capacity. You know, if you look at last year's number, we had the capacity about 1,700. And I'm going to tell you that we went out and did a review, and in design, according to state standards, the number does hold up. Now, the problem with that is that you may or may not agree with state standards as far as width of hallways, you know, size of space, because it aligns, the architects, I believe, did a right job with it, but I think the infrastructure of the site, the property, parking, transportation, go down the list, does not allow a 1,700 on that campus. We've taken that number down to 1,200, which is a reasonable, which is a reasonable assumption. Now, nothing I can do about adding a complete new building to an old building, because that's what happened in that case. It does follow Virginia State guidelines. We did the review for it, and because we were concerned, as we walked the building, we saw what was going on in the core of the building, it becomes concerning. You know, five lunch periods, they're starting lunch early. So even looking at that building down in time to figure out what we do better with that building maybe as a division, along with the school community, may be a better idea than giving that a 1,700 capacity. I just don't, I've been doing this a while, I just don't think that site can handle 1,700 middle school students for a lot of reasons. Now, with that being said, you know, we have about 7,400 middle school seats for a projected enrollment of about 6,200 kids. So there is room yet for reduction of space at the middle school. I think that we may review in the next phase of planning this concept of maybe some combination of grade level, maybe three-eight concepts where available. The only middle school right now you have below 75% utilization is Roughness. Everything else is 75% and above. And so with that, a reduction of middle school seats at this level, I think, at this time, would require significant boundary changes in order to balance if you were to close the building. And so after discussion, internal discussion, we think that next fall, we are going to bring you a recommendation to reduce middle school seats for the 16, 17 school year. So that, and again, that being said, in a continuing, we've had some discussions about continuing services with the division, which we're very pleased about. We think that this may put us back on a right cycle of planning for you to make decisions for budgets earlier. We think that at the end of this, we're going to show you a timeline that shows us really bringing recommendations to you guys in November for the following year. That way, you can get ahead of budget. This year, we didn't start until December, and so we were really crunched. Now, this will get us back on cycle, and we think that's going to be beneficial for you. So with that, let me kind of move in. Again, we're working towards goals of trying to balance the milestones for socioeconomic diversity in the vision. Again, I'm going, as I said in the last update, it's hard to set benchmarks to where you want to be at each school because, and it's socioeconomic, because the poverty numbers are so high right now. So what we chose to do in this is to look toward providing opportunity for diversity and to see where those goals can be met. We want to identify, we want to continue to look at how those are going to affect feeder patterns, how programmatically we can feed forward to align programs in the right way, and that's a big part of our discussion today. And then finally, to communicate with the Norfolk community. We have a couple of things that we need to do pretty quickly. We need to go out and meet with Willoughby and Ocean View parents fairly quickly, and when I say fairly quickly, I mean in the next couple of weeks. And then, depending on decisions by the board as far as the concept of what we may bring to you on the neighborhood and choice concept, getting out in May to go talk to communities in a bigger scope about this concept that we'd like to move forward on. And so there's a couple of things that we really need to go press out with the community and get some input on, too. You know, since we've talked, we met with the steering committee again. We talked about Willoughby and Ocean View recommendations and neighborhood and choice concepts and even community engagement. We did two focus groups meetings, and what that meant is that we took the concept and we, as a result of a recommendation of the steering committee, to really vet this choice concept in neighborhood schools. They thought it might be better if we got a smaller group together to kind of pound through it, really try to ding some holes in it to make sure that we are on the right direction. I will tell you that the feedback in those small groups, and those small groups were at Booker T. Washington, I think we had roughly 20 people attend that meeting, it was 25 in that focus group, and then we met at the Bayview Community Center, and we had about the same, about 30 at that one. Favorable response with caution, as anything is, that they like the idea of figuring out how we can diversify schools with good programs. There are concerns about implementation, moving too fast or too slow. We had originally proposed kind of a two- to five-year timeframe. We're going to back that down a little bit to two to four years, but, and then also really, there's real concern out there about kind of spreading programs too thin and watering down programs. And so we are cautious to that as we move forward in this. But overall, I feel like there is very favorable response to an approach of providing quality neighborhood schools with choice in them at a limited basis. And so the focus groups were really, really good. Then out of that, we're going to, we developed this report for you guys to see today. Let's talk about the Willoughby and Ocean View elementary. This was approved back in the last plan to make this transition. Now, we saw an opportunity here that maybe we could back away from the final recommendation and kind of transition into what we need to do. We saw a real issue with fourth and fifth grade enrollment dwindling so much in the survival ratio that, you know, the fifth graders have literally at this time eight kids in the fifth grade classroom, and, which is challenging programmatically for those students on a lot of different levels. Test scores are affected by that dramatically, a lot of operational issues when you have class sizes that small, as we can all imagine. But there's something that happens from third to fifth grade there, and it's a transitional community anyway. And so we think that we can move the second, or the third, fourth, and fifth grade cohort over to Ocean View, the current Ocean View, have enough capacity to do it, switch over the pre-K out of Ocean View into Willoughby, and make it a pre-K2 center. Now, with the 2000 opening, 2017 opening of Ocean View, that we would make the complete transition to make Willoughby a pre-K center, okay? Now, let me show you some numbers on this, just to, so we have it. If you can see that on April 1st, the enrollment of each grade level, second, third, and fourth and fifth grade there, and you can see that decline in enrollment. If you see what it means in the projected enrollment for next year and the class size for each one, you can see at fifth grade, we're going to be offered four fifth-grade classrooms at Ocean View, and what an opportunity to have four resources at fifth grade, you know, teachers there to provide that. Here's, now, what we also did was we wanted to look at, you know, kind of the domino effect like we like to do. We searched for like addresses, okay? We wanted to see of, at the, at Willoughby, how many kids had like addresses? And so we found that 93 kids had like addresses. I did a keystroke here, there are actually 43 that have like addresses and like names. That's the assumption you can make. Now, a Jones and a Jones can be a cousin, but we're assuming they are siblings, okay? Okay, so, so of 43. Now, of that, 22 of those are kindergartners and 21 are first graders, okay? So, because a sibling question is going to come up about, now, the schools, quite frankly, aren't that far apart. Driver and a pitch and wedge, maybe, okay? They are, they're close, but there's still separation, and we know that, okay? And we do not want to cause disruption to the parents dropping off and having to go to two schools and doing that. And so there's a couple of things that we need to consider when we're talking about a transition like this when it comes to siblings, not only siblings, but kindergarten enrollment. If there's a policy-level decision based on your current policy on consolidation of schools, and, because basically, for all intents purposes, we're consolidating, is what we're doing. And so there's a policy-level driven discussion there. But when you break that down to, are we going to allow siblings to enter into the Ocean View also, which we believe there's still enough capacity to do it. The capacity at 608, we think there's going to be about 590 if you took all the kids with sibling also. And so we have enough capacity at the building to accomplish this. However, they may or may not want to go, and so they may want to continue within the Willoughby, you know, situation. The other thing that you have is entering kindergarten. With the entering kindergarten, now, the enrollment for the past at Ocean View has been, you know, somewhere in that, you know, 35 to 40 kindergarteners that are in the kindergarten class. If there's a decision to allow kindergartners to register for Ocean View instead of Willoughby as an entry point, then, you know, we're going to raise a number at Ocean View to have probably what likely would be six kindergarten classes. I mean, there's, you know, 40 kids going into each one. You never know what a parent's going to make a decision on. If they want to stay at Willoughby as they enter kindergarten, or do you enter into the school I'm going to finish at in time? And every parent has a different opinion on it. Willoughby would offer a smaller school environment to enter in, and that's very, very desirable to some parents. Personally, as a parent, I'd like my daughter in a school that she's going to kind of finish at. I mean, it's just, you never know what they're going to do. And so there has to be probably some decision as far as how we procedurally go into this transition, and that's a big discussion point today. Now, the real consequence of this is this, is that right now, the first grade class has 28 students in it, okay? That, or it actually has 30. Two have been accepted in Lakewood already, and that leaves 28.
Is that at Willoughby?
This is at Willoughby. Now, with siblings, all of a sudden, you're, because right now you're at two teachers, two teaching units, because you're above the 24 threshold. You get four out, you go down to one teaching unit, it means a teacher, resources moved, and so you have real personnel transition, too, that occurs on a simple swing of four or five kids. Now, it's also a Title I school, so you may have reduced class size here, and I bet we're double-checking on that. But a swing of, you know, five of the siblings makes a teacher difference at this school.
I just want to make sure, you mentioned 28 students in the first grade.
Uh-huh.
And you said two go into...
Well, of the third, there's 30. And right now, there's 30 kids, and we know that...
28 projected for second grade.
Oh, for next grade, I'm sorry.
Lakewood doesn't, first to second.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, that's what I want to get clear.
Okay, so we know, but we had two from Willoughby that are total. Okay, sorry about that. So with it, thanks for the clarification, Mr. Jordan. So with that, though, again, we're in a four or five student swing, that could mean a teacher. And that's, I mean, that's a big deal. When you got two second-grade teachers and one's going to go, that's, that is really a decision. Now, you think something this easy wouldn't be that hard, but it really does. It affects a lot of, in the domino, based on the policy that, or the practice that you want to move forward with on that. There is a possibility that if you wanted to back it down to a pre-K1 and go to five, there's less of an impact, and that's a possibility, too. So we're not, we haven't vetted that with the steering committee, but the steering committee is well-aware of numbers and how they work with that, and I think if they saw a personnel change like that, so dramatic of 50%, they may say, yeah, this is an acceptable way. But also in the community engagement piece of this, when we go out, it may be beneficial to us to survey to see what is your intention as a parent, to talk to the parents, to say, if you are a kindergartner or a first grader and you have a sibling, what is your, what would you rather do? And it may give us a good idea of that, of the staffing and resources. So, but we still think that this is a transition that should happen for next year to allow the pre-K center to start running. Yep?
Question?
I'm sorry.
So, this is the question that I had, which was kind of brought up at our work session on April the 1st. We have received a grant to allow us to have 10 more pre-K classes. Currently, right now, Willoughby has two pre-K classes and a waitlist of zero. The way that NPS operates as far as pre-K goes is you have to provide your own transportation. You have to physically drop your child off, sign them in, and sign them out. So logistically, would, if Willoughby opens up as a pre-K center, would there need to be board policy implications in that, would we need to change our transportation guidelines or our parent drop-off pickup guidelines in order to allow for more students to take advantage of the fact that it is going to be a pre-K center?
On the transportation, I guess I'm not clear as to why that would change your transportation policy.
Because if we need to, if we opened it up as a pre-K center, and we have, and our rules are right now, you can only drive your children there, you have to drive them there, pick them up, drop them off. If we do not have the enrollment to fill up Willoughby as a pre-K center because parents can't physically drive them there...
Sure.
Would we need to have a transportation policy in place? At the, at Easton Preschool, do we, parents drop the children off and they pick them up? There's no transportation provided, or is it?
So first students to have the...
Do you mean Norfolk?
Yes.
This is different, because it's more so, I think it's only two junior and freshman there. Majority of the students go there, so we have to provide transportation.
And that's pre-K?
Yes.
It is pre-K.
So right now, there's about 73 pre-K students at Ocean View that we would move. Is that, that number's close? I mean, it's, it probably fluctuates day-to-day, but let's say there's 75 kids right now that we are going to, we're going to replace back into Willoughby.
Okay.
And so, well, there's, what, five classrooms? And plus the two classrooms that are exist, so we're at seven classrooms without any sort of, knowing what the enrollment is for next year yet.
Okay.
So I guess it's, it would be a, an operational policy decision about how you did that. You're going to fill, I think in time, when we make the transition out, when Ocean View gets built, and we really make that a pre-K center, I think maybe that's the time to make that decision. We got, we got about a year before we get in front of that transportation question because you, because you currently, however you handle your Ocean View children now, I wouldn't change that for this. And again, the buildings aren't so far apart from each other. That makes a huge difference, I guess. There's also, I mean, we talked, we talked as far as transportation goes, if you, if you kind of kept this sibling thing going, or if you didn't, there is a possibility that you could just have a transport bus, so if you have a drop-off bus that picks up in neighborhoods, stays at one school, and then just does a transfer between buildings, stays for that extra mile and a half, so a three-mile round trip daily for students who, or parents who want one drop-off or a pre-K situation, where you could do that. So there's still some fluctuations to what you can do. But as far as changing the policy right now from where you are, I think you can wait a year to see what will be the impact of that pre-K center in that following year.
So I, my question would then be, building capacity-wise, if we are going to look at it as a potential pre-K to one, what would those numbers look like? And then if we look at it as a pre-K to two, what would those numbers look like so that we can take full advantage of every pre-K slot that we have available? I know the need is out there.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of, for the folks that are applying, will they be able to bring their child there...
Okay.
And pick them up...
Okay.
Under the current policy that we have.
Okay. And that, I think that the big wild card in, because we can tell you the current numbers, well, even in that, did that just go flying for some reason? I don't know why. If we look at those projected numbers in there for Willoughby, it will be driven by what the decision for kindergarten entry is and for sibling policy.
Which gets back to your survey and intention.
That's what I think.
Yes.
And if we can do that, we'll have a good grasp for you on that answer. And we would probably turn that around pretty quickly to allow that to happen. Okay. So we are going to look at that last week of April, first week of May for this meeting, if that would be okay. We'd have to see what the principal, how, work with the principals to do that, though. Are there any question, other questions on Willoughby and Ocean View? Okay, okay. So we'll keep you, we'll keep you apprised to our meeting dates?
We, we have to, yeah.
Yeah.
To Dr. King and the staff, so at Willoughby, we have whatever our staffing is, so with specialists, you know, reading specialist, math specialist, and so on. So I think last year, when we closed Lafayette Winona and students went to other schools, we said that we would provide some staffing support there. So with this potential consideration, are you all looking at or discussing the staffing in terms of specialists that are currently assigned at Willoughby and what potential impact that might be, might have?
The answer is yes. It's going to depend on which model. Of course, if the board gives us a green light to go forward with the community conversations, then we'll have an opportunity to have a recommendation coming back from the group, the steering committee. Administration will review that. A part of the administrative review will consist of the implications around support staffing, like specialists and that kind of thing, because it will be driven by the model, and what we're working to do have been discussing, centers on differentiating how, beginning to differentiate how we assign support staff to buildings. So the long response to your question would be yes. However, it will be driven by which model ends up the last dependent model that we would be going forward with. And so I think it will begin to move us closer to a position where we could begin to staff based on the differentiated process. Yeah, so, but yeah, we would be looking at that in terms of services. But I think the board will have to remember that as we move forward in this way, it could result in ultimately, school X receiving X amount of service, school Y receiving a different level of service, but equitable. Not equal, but it's equitable. So that's something that maybe the board would want to take a look at as far as implications for policy, if it's that passionate about it, to ensure that it is rock-solid and that it does continue, so.
So may I ask about timing?
Mm-hmm.
This is, you know, we're in April, in essence, we're in May. Although I know it's April 15th, but let's just think 15 days from now, we're there. So what board action, Dr. King and Tracy, will you need in order to move forward, and how quickly will you need that so that we can move the train along and allow community input, allow families to know what's happening, and for you all to prepare for the next year? Because we, again, don't meet technically again until May 6th, so I ask that now because the other recommendations I don't think require such a quick turnaround in timing.
Right.
This does. So can we have that conversation now, if we may?
We have to, because...
We would really have to set up a timeline.
Yeah.
And even though it's consolidation, not a close, not a closure, I would have to go back and look at, right, so we still need a public hearing.
Exactly.
But I'd have to go back and look at the policy. I'm not...
Two.
Well, and even if it didn't require an official public hearing, we want a public airing by all means, right?
Well said.
So whatever it requires, we need to do what we can to inform the community.
Two, and again, there's two, there's two directions you can go on this. I mean, you can end with both, with kindergarten entry and sibling policy. To Mr. Jordan and Dr. King's point, programmatically, you would be more beneficial to not allow the transfer to happen, because you would hold numbers, obviously. You could keep more resources at that building and not transfer so much, and there wouldn't be so much kind of chaos of movement. However, the problem with that is that you take a choice away from parents that may want to keep their kids together, and you may alienate that. And so I don't pretend it's an easy decision, but programmatically, you're better keeping all students there. If they want to apply for the transfer, they would go through the regular transfer policy that you have.
I'm sorry, was it at Willoughby?
At, at Willoughby.
The pre-K to two.
Yeah, the pre-K to two.
Or just the pre-K to one.
Yeah. Or even, so if you have, yeah, for next year, having those students that live in the boundary of Willoughby that are going to be kindergartners and are entering kindergarten, you have an option that you could let them apply to Ocean View, because that's where they're going to end up anyway. If you just... If you just, if you say no, you're in the Willoughby boundary, still for kindergarten, first and second grade, unless you apply for transfer, um, which is a process in itself, which may eliminate some of that to happen. But if you, if you stay on that side to say, you still have a boundary for K two, enter kindergarten, first and second graders, without sibling poli, without sibling acceptance, you're gonna hold better numbers, which programmatically and resource-wise, you're gonna be more stable. If you allow the other one, it's going to probably be satisfying to community members, but maybe play more havoc on the programmatic and, and staffing side. So those are your, those are the two choices, and everything has a good and bad to it, I guess, in that.
So the, the question is, the timing of, when is it you need the board to make a decision on either pre-K one or pre-K two in order for you to hold the intent for, for use?
Well, that May sixth may be your deadline on that for, for decision.
I think for us, just in terms of logistics, we would wanna make that decision as a board by the formal business meeting in May. With, with, without question. And so we would need to do our due diligence between now and then, we're talking the next thirty days. Right?
I would suggest then we have a, a public hearing that last week of April. Then we can discuss it at the work session on the first week of May. And then with the decision being made, presumably at the boards, at the regular board session, the third week of May.
So are you suggesting that the public hearing could help us derive what a recommendation would be?
Oh, absolutely.
Based on the public input?
Yep.
And therefore, May sixth, we could discuss?
Yep.
And then likely then vote May twenty, but with the public knowing where we're likely to go based on their early input?
Right. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think earlier input from the community is great.
Nora?
So, explain to me again how we are going to delineate, um, who, based on zip code, based on their address, who goes to Ocean View? And who goes to Willoughby during the kindergarten and first grade? Or is that something that we have to make, we, we're gonna get the input on to make the decision?
Um, you would currently, you would just hold your current boundary.
Okay.
And so, Willoughby would still have its own boundary.
Okay.
And all K through two students, or K one, whichever way we go, will still attend Willoughby.
Still attend Willoughby, okay.
Yeah. And then, um, so if you hold that firm, without any sibling or transfer policy there, we just hold that.
Okay.
And we can address match it, we can see the impact of that on, with the geocoded student data.
Okay.
Um, if you decide the other way, that's where I think our intense survey with the community will be important. And I think that we need to work very quickly with the principals to make sure parents know that that's coming to them.
And I would just say that we're very clear with what our proposals are going into those meetings, and then into the public hearing, what we, what the options are that we are considering. So they know exactly what to comment on, to, to, their feedback, what feedback we're looking for from them.
Okay. We can do that.
So is there any other action that you need on the board's behalf today, just related to this?
Um.
Ocean View, Willoughby?
Other than if you told me, don't do this, um, as far as a action, as far as making the, making the transition happen, I think this is the direction we're recommending to go.
Regarding the pre-K and Ocean View, we're gonna move on to other things next, right?
We are.
Okay?
Okay.
Then we're good there.
Excellent. All right, let's move on to the fun stuff. Neighborhood and Choice Concept. Now, again, I think we're even still playing with, um, kind of verbiage here. Knowing that we, we really want something that grabs the, the intent of what we wanna do. Our goal for this is to get buy-in on the concept, um, division-wide. First from the board, the focus groups, I believe we got buy-in from. The steering committee, we do have buy-in from to move forward, but, um, but also, it's the, the buy-in on the concept that we want to move forward on planning this, this action. And there's several things that have to happen in order for that to occur. We believe that in order to achieve this, the, the primary basis of this is to, you select schools in a region of the district that students have a regional choice to go to another school, the neighborhood school. Um, and we did that to try to limit transportation and accessibility to, to school buildings. And we have some maps to show you on that. But the, the, the key to this, and this is the key that, that really drives this home, the primary purpose is to strengthen neighborhood schools. Is not, the primary purpose isn't to create the greatest choice programs out there, even though you want to do that also. But the first point to this is that we want to strengthen the neighborhood school. To make every school, every child's first option. And that's our goal. Now, there are seats out there, schools out there that have diminishing communities, just population-wise, and also areas of the community that are leaving the public school to go to private schools. Um, and it merges more in certain parts of the city, and we know that. What we're trying to look at is trying to balance the division, so we offer mirror programs at two elementaries in two different regions, that are both in high poverty and non-high poverty areas. And you, you're gonna see on the map that that's exactly what it does. We are very careful that we are not going to name programs yet, and there's reasoning behind that, and it's part of the process of development here. We believe that it's a school within a school concept also. At the elementary grade level, um, whole school magnets, you already have whole school magnets at elementary grade levels. You don't need anymore. You're gonna start to walk a slippery slope of really dividing programmatically and causing a rift, um, even staff-wise, principal-wise, about taking kids into magnet schools. You already, at some extent, there's already that challenge out there for the neighborhood school principal that says, how do we keep our kids? And so, our focus is to make sure that we strengthen that neighborhood school by first looking at, you know, the programs that we wanna develop within here, and limit the number of programs. We're not going out there, and we're not gonna create twelve different programs. The foundation of this is in the transformation initiative. I believe that the transformation piece to this was the direction that was going to provide opportunity for quality, quality education and diversity. Um, and so it's founded in the basis of that. Now, that part, you know, how it got done, how it is, we're gonna set that aside. We're done with that. What we are going to do is we're gonna have this laser focus on making sure we're gonna choose three of the best programs that fit Norfolk Public Schools. We're not gonna go out there and say, oh, it's gonna be IB because everybody's doing IB. We're not gonna do this because everybody's doing this. We are going to specifically look at the, the professional development that has occurred already, moving forward to transformation, to see if that's, that's effective. And, you know, and it also moves us a step closer. So the professional development that's occurred, if we have, um, the ability to take advantage of that, we're going to consider those as programs. Also, um, we wanna make sure that we are looking forward to the feeder of programs. And so, we wanna make sure that they align to middle grades and high school education, that we're setting foundations to allow that to happen. Without diluting and watering down programs. And so, when, what we have here, we've identified schools, what we try to do is look at five-year projection of the live-in student enrollment. And we aligned it to attendance also, and they align pretty well. But the facilities with the projected capacity out there, we, we looked at, and we'll take out Bayview and Richard Bowen just for a second. But if you look at the four schools of Tanner Creek, Willard, Model, Monroe, and Taylor, they happen to fall right in the center. Right, what I might call, in, in Georgia, they call it the fall line, you know, the fall line right in the middle of the state. You guys kinda have that line right in the middle, where we have projected empty seats at three, these three schools. Our first kind of initiative was to say, give me any school in a projected enrollment that's gonna have a hundred empty seats, four classrooms, and see what those schools are. And as you align these schools onto a map, you're gonna see that, um, that we have schools that, that we're looking at, you know, Tanner's Creek out with Taylor, and then Monroe and Willard as partners, that one of, so Tanner's Creek and, and Taylor, one is in a higher poverty area, density poverty area, one is not. And so, and they're in different regions. And so, we have to have some discussion as to what those regions look like. So are they kind of a, they tend to fall into kind of this northeast-southeast kind of idea. And then also in the, in the Willard, Model, Monroe, the same thing. You have one that's in a higher density poverty area, and the other one that is not. So the idea is that you're going to try to diversify into these areas by attracting kids in to a higher poverty area, which is tougher to do, to get kids from non-high poverty areas into poverty areas, and you're going to do the reverse. You're going to take kids out of high poverty into not-so-high poverty schools. And so, we've caused this, this ability to allow that socio, socioeconomic diversity to occur. Now, here's what we've also suggested here, though, is that we limit the number of seats of the choice program. At these buildings, you could basically do four or five classrooms within the program. We also think the programs have to be developed with access to the neighborhood students. And so if a program is in there, neighborhood students have access to that program, as well as the, the choice kids have access into the neighborhood offering also. So it's truly a school within a school model. Now, the intent here is that, for instance, if you look out at Taylor, a decline in enrollment at that school, in a very strong neighborhood. Now, why, why don't kids go to that school? Well, I don't care. I'm gonna create the best neighborhood school and a great choice program that's going to make sure that when you live in that area of the city, that Taylor Elementary is your first choice to go to. It's not a private school, it's not because of the choice program, but it has incentive because you have access to that choice program. Now, the worst possible scenario is that the neighborhood crowds out the choice program. Now, if that's your worst-case scenario, you've got a good problem. Now, I'm going to caution you in this process, in this, and this is one of the red flags that I think occurs too often, is that with good implementation, professional development leadership in these buildings, good choice programs are gonna attract a lot of kids. I will caution the board not to succumb to pressure of opening more seats at these neighborhood schools to allow more choice kids in, that butts out the neighborhood kids to bolster that neighborhood. And the reason for that is because that is there to do just that, is to support the neighborhood school. Now, if it becomes so radical that you do fill up the school, you have the opportunity to relocate the program. That's what's great about choice programs. And so, we feel like we've tried to meet your goals by providing limits of choice, but accessibility regionally, so parents, students all have access to a close-by school. And again, this will not guarantee socioeconomic diversity. It won't guarantee that kids come in, I'll, I'll tell you that. But we can provide the opportunity to allow that to happen. Now, just on that kind of, I'm gonna kinda stop right there as the initial conversation point, before I kinda get into detail of how it works. So do you want me to go show you some detail? I saw. Yes, sir.
So if the, if the whole, the idea fills seats up with neighborhood kids,
Mm-hmm.
How, how does that promote diversity?
Well, well, here's what's gonna happen. Again, it may or may not. But what's happening is that we have empty seats in these neighborhoods.
Mm-hmm.
And the, if you wanna keep those choice seats, I would agree, keep those choice seats to keep the diversity. But once again, the worst problem to have is to have the neighborhood fill it, and that, and that's not a bad problem. So, you have to make some decisions then. Do we keep the choice program?
Right.
And then, then we have to figure out, is it a boundary solution? Isn't it an addition solution? Is it a, is it a program movement solution that allows for that socioeconomic diversity to happen in another building? So there's probably three or four pathways that you can take if that were to occur. Yeah.
I just wanted to make, if you could clarify again, for those who might be watching, what you mean by the projected capacity for the seats?
Okay. So, when we looked out at, um, the projected enrollment versus the capacity of each building, and we went out five years, um, and we looked at the live-in, and the, and, because the attendance, because you have such a migration rate, who knows where it, where it's really gonna hit. But let's, let's take Bayview, for instance. We looked out five years of projected enrollment versus the capacity of the building, and we discovered there's approximately a hundred and fifty empty seats at that building. And at twenty-two per class, which we figure for elementary, that's probably seven or eight empty classrooms in that building. And so that's where we're trying to get to that number. Monroe's a little tight in this situation. We even think that, one of the reasons we wanna do some further exploration is that Bayview, Terrleton, um, I lost the other school up there, um, all of those schools in there are all maybe possibilities for, for consideration. Bayview, mostly because it offered an opportunity in a higher poverty area, around that area, that the reason we chose that. But you can move a little southeast if you want, and look at those two other schools. Because in those elementary schools up there, um, small buildings that, you know, we may be considering something as far as, um, planning in next year's recommendation anyway with those buildings. Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think the most important thing you said to me for the future is that that neighborhood not be disrupted, and that the choice program, and you're using the word choice in at least two different ways. I, I think that's a critical philosophical position that I would favor.
And that's what I believe is a strength of this. I think that.
And I'm seconding that.
Well, and I, well, I appreciate that. The effort that was made to consider all of those alternatives made sure that, and again, I would not support this if the concept of the neighborhood first wasn't in the theory of this. Which provides that opportunity. And so we need to be careful, as far as program selection goes, that doesn't exclude neighborhood kids because of qualifications that may, may or may not happen. And maybe that's okay. Maybe if you look at, you know, a primary IB, where there may be some, you may have kids in those neighborhoods that aren't going to IB programs because they just can't access them. And it may be attractive. And so, not to say that that's one, but it could be. And so we wanna make sure, but then, again, then we wanna make sure that you get to middle school, that they're going to strong programs that aren't, that, that really are core to the middle school success. And so, do we need to, so are we going to have to look at things like young scholars? Absolutely. Are we gonna have to look at things like the medical program at Blair? Absolutely. Because we want to make sure that those programs are strong to walk into from the primary grade levels. In that. Here, and just really quick, because where you're, this, and I'm not pushing you on, but you can see, this is a, um, this is a poverty density map. And you can see where schools are located versus the, the dark purple are the poverty areas. And so you can see the balance of Tanner's Creek and Taylor, and even in the Monroe-Willard School, that, um, the shades of it, how they occur. Now, I'm not sure if this was coincidental or meant to be, these buildings. Maybe a little bit of both. But they fell in the right spots that allowed us to run high poverty into low poverty, and low poverty into high poverty, which is exactly what we wanted to do and offer that. This is an example. Lee, um, Lee kinda drew a line, based on some current boundaries of where the, so, in the example, um, we would say that, and let me go to an example to show you that, what it means by the region choice. Then this is just one side of the occasion, equation. Now, this one may be a bad example because you got Lake Taylor in the equation, and Lake Taylor will become a division-wide boundary, and so, but right now, as a high school, let's just, let's just pretend it's always gonna have a boundary at this point. But in this case, you can see that the students would have, first of all, their first choice, and we use Larchmont as an example, that's their neighborhood school. Their choices could be Taylor, Monroe, or Bayview, based on the region they live in. Okay, for a choice program, if they applied for a choice program. Or they always have Gant and Campustella out there. There are choice seats at those buildings. And so we know that those occur. And so, plenty of opportunity, but we wanna make sure that it is clear to the entering kindergarten parent that, and it's not confusing. You basically have, you basically have three choices. You can go to your neighborhood school, which is your first choice, and should be your first choice. You could go to one of the limited-choice programs, or you can go to the traditional, um, Gant choice, or what will be Campustella, if there are choice seats available. And Lakewood will fall in this now, absolutely. And so, um, we'll add Lakewood into this, into this, um, graphic, too. Now, when you leave Larchmont, you have the neighborhood school, which is Blair, or you have a choice middle school, which you do anyway. have a choice middle school, which you do anyway. And then when you leave there, you've got Maury High School, you've got a specialty high school, and what could be Lake Taylor in the future. And so, here's the thing, is that you've got the pathway for whatever you want to do, but also it is a vertical pathway that's very traceable for each student. And so we haven't confused that. So we know a student that enters in that Larchmont is going to be kind of in a pathway that we can follow the whole way, and it's definable. And so, and you could even go to, and this is, you know, the other one, where popular halls, Lake Taylor, Lake Taylor. Again, you can see that then, like popular halls would be a Tanner's Creek-Willard-Richard Bowling, if Richard Bowling was the school that we, that we would choose for that. And then you have your traditional choice programs. And so, we think that, again, a lot of benefits to this. These schools are still very accessible to parents and close to their neighborhoods, as close as we can get, and doesn't remove, that we don't have to take a kid from, you know, necessarily from popular halls all the way up to Bayview to get a choice program. But they can get the very same program right down the road at Richard Bowling. And so, again, that's just the example that we're using to graphically show people, and we kind of cleaned this up an awful lot from our, from our initial meetings, and from our steering committee meeting to our focus groups. And when we walked into the focus groups, focus groups had no problem understanding this. They thought, that is a clear direction. As a parent, I know where I can go. And we thought that is positive for us, and that was good feedback. So I will add the Lakewood into there, and I appreciate that, to do that. Now, let me back up a little bit to the programmatic approach to this. And that's what it is, is programmatic. We create regional choice programs that mirror in each region the same program. We limit choices in each building, and we locate both ways. The program A, we see the pairings to be Tanner's Creek-Taylor, we see the pairings to be Monroe-Willard Model, and Richard Bowling-Bayview. And that Richard Bowling and Bayview, again, there's some dynamics happening at Richard Bowling that we don't want to disrupt either. And so we may, we may rethink Richard Bowling in this situation, if we have to, because we don't want to, we don't want to mess up the dynamic that's occurring there right now. And Bayview, again, we have the choice of a couple of schools up in the north area that we can, we can adjust to if we need to. Now, as far as implementation and process approach go, we think that going beyond the focus groups into the general community in May to hear what they have to say about this, you know, again, the opportunity, much like we told the focus groups, we want you to beat this apart and beat it apart and beat it apart until we get it right. That's their goal. And the focus groups, that was their primary goal. And I said, I know you don't hear that very often when you come to school community meetings, but that's our goal. When we implement this thing, we want it to be as, as rock-solid as it can be. We think that the first step to this is to do the program analysis for optimal, optimal program selection. We work with, I work specifically with a couple of nationally-recognized choice program people out there that recognize that C-choice and no-choice, that we may tap into on this, that help, can help support this process. We also think that, you know, the, the leadership in place for this is, is ready to go on this, too. And so I think we're ready for this. And we think that's a summer, that's a summer. That's how we spend our summers, developing that analysis. We think that the facility needs analysis based on the program choices and the adjustments that have to be made. I don't want to escape the idea that every elementary school in this district is going to have to have in time a science lab and/or a project-based learning lab. And come fall, that is probably what's going to come to you. At least one space as a recommendation in the facilities and capital improvement, that we make the effort that every elementary has a science lab in it, or a project-based resource, whatever you want to call it, but it's a, basically it's a wet lab, offers science opportunities.
Every, every elementary school?
Every elementary school. We believe that's a foundation for good middle school and high school education. We don't believe, but it's going to affect your capacity, which actually helps you guys because we're going to take a couple of classrooms offline, and we're not going to give that room capacity. It'll be a true resource room for all teachers to utilize in all elementary schools. Financially, we don't think you're in a position to accept a, a recommendation like that this year. And so, yeah, we're, we're going to hold off on that.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, that's exactly right. And, and we're also going to look to stage it in to how we need to do it appropriately. And so, making the goal that within a certain time period, every school does have that opportunity. So that facility needs analysis for these schools has to occur. School leadership assignment. Now, this isn't, this isn't something to put as a bullet point, to have your principals out there threatening of their job.
Too late, it's already in there.
I know, it's up there. But the purpose of school leadership assignment is to really look at, look at principals that are, that have the leadership or want to take on the leadership of a choice program within a neighborhood school. Now, regardless of, and again, I'm going to jump to Lakewood really quick. You have a very strong leader in that school. Agree or disagree with what he's done, he's done something to attract a lot of attention to this building. Now, whatever process was, it was. And like it or not, it's done, and he's done a fabulous job of getting students interested and engaged in this school. That's the kind of principals we need at these schools. And, and again, maybe the principal there is or is not the person for that, and that's okay. That, and I think that any good leader will tell you that I'm not right for this, and they'll step to the next leadership position. And, and those who don't will step aside anyway. And so I don't, again, I'm not posing this one as a principals watch out. I'm offering an opportunity for principals to step up and say, I want to do this. And so, that school leadership assignment, though, has to happen internally. That has to, when you make that decision, how you make that decision. If I had my druthers, I would do this sooner than later. To get the students, those, if we decide on schools to make this decision, to get those principals in there immediately, to start the transition to happen, even before the choice programs come in. And so, if I were to give you a recommendation on that, that would be one that we push forward in the process, or up in the process. Then, you have to go through a choice selection process and procedure. How are you going to select students? What, are you going to use a lottery? Are you going to use a, whatever? Are you going to use a what? Explore, there are good models out there for this, and then we choose the best possible options for that. You have professional development that's going to have to occur over the next couple of years, and then you have the implementation of programs. As I see it, if you look out into 2015, we can get through a lot of the community stuff. Frankly, the green line for community meetings can go all the way across. Yeah, I didn't mean to end it there. We can make it all the way across because we're going to have to continually engage communities on this. The program analysis has to, we, we believe we have to bring a recommendation to you by fall in that. The facility needs analysis can occur in the fall. That will not take a lot of time. You already have really good, this planning process has brought up a lot of good facility data for us, so we're good there. The school leadership assignment, I know that occurs typically in May-June, but if we look to implement this in 17, 18, it may be something that the division explores this summer to see leadership to go into these buildings. And again, characters of leaders that go into these buildings. It may be something that you push forward on that. But this is where the two-to-four-year comes into play. We think that the first program should probably occur in the 2017-18 school year. We think that that gives enough time to get neighborhoods, programs, PD all ready to enter the program.
Can you clarify first, do you mean one of the pairings?
One of the pairings.
One of the pairings.
And it could be two of the pairings. But two of the three or one of the three, but it may be a good model to go ahead and open just one of the pairings to kind of work through any sort of transitional kinks you may have, and then go ahead and implement the other two in the following year. Two-to-four-year sounds like a long time, but that's exactly right. We think that with the neighborhood, that, again, one of the big things we heard are the focus groups, impulse decision-making, that things don't get followed through on because of their funding or whatever. We want to make sure that the division doesn't do that. We want to make sure it's thorough. We want to make sure it's done in a procedural order that happens. And so, we believe that this is a timeline that provides exactly the stability, program acts' stability, and what this community wants, is good change that is thought through, and really, you, you've done all your homework before you walked into it. And we believe that that's what this neighborhood choice concept does in this. And it's a, so although not a lot of action, other than yes or no, do we move forward on the, the concept development of this, but maybe one of the biggest things that we'll do in the next five years in this division. So if you can't tell, I'm excited. I am, I would, I'm so engaged in this at this point, and I'm, I can't tell you how excited I am to offer opportunity to do what you guys really want to do. So-
Stop.
I, yeah, let me see. Move to Norfolk. Now, I would move to Norfolk. I, I wouldn't, but, yeah, no, I bring you guys snow. You don't want me here. But I think that this is something that two years ago, you had a premise for, that we really think we can accomplish in the right way without sort of the politics that get involved with naming of things. And so hopefully what, and again, all I'm after today is, can we continue moving on with this concept? Do we continue to do this and really push forward on what we want to do for this?
This might be a little bit too detailed, but I just want to walk it through just to make it extremely simple, maybe even for me to understand. So let's just take Tanner's Creek and Taylor Elementary School. There's a program there. Let's say it's, for example, a medical program that we decide to initiate. Are we saying that it would be like a grades K through five program, or it just, it just depends?
It would depend. And again, I think that's the programmatic review we have to have.
Okay. So we would need to determine if it's going to span the years, or if it's going to be something super-specialized for like grades four through five, for example. The teachers that would be in that program, they would receive combo professional development. So Tanner's Creek teachers, Taylor Elementary teachers, they would receive the same professional development. And it would be the same program at each building?
Identical.
Okay.
But I think in an ideal situation, those parents or those teachers carry a neighborhood teaching responsibility, too. And so there is, it's going to take a pretty good teacher to be in those rooms to, to do that dynamic that allow that to happen. But yes, they would be mirrored, same professional development, that same resources, everything identical in those programs.
And, and same expectations.
Absolutely.
Outcomes.
Outcomes.
Yes.
Great.
One thing I would add, potentially the process approach, is budget implications.
Okay.
So if we could know now along the way what it's going to cost to implement this neighborhood choice concept, so that we can start building that into our budgets now, then we don't fall short in 17 and say, well, we can't afford X or Y. So if we start now, then we're going to be able to lay out the expectation.
Got it.
A little history, two questions, and a dream.
Okay.
My history. When I came on this board with Dr. King and I, we went to a national conference. I'd had a dream that I would be part of five-year budget planning, and then all of a sudden we have a CFO, Dr. Michael Thornton, who knows how to do that. And combined with that was a need for a demographer. We heard one model school system that was doing that. And so then Dr. King and his colleagues chose the best possible choice, you and Bill. It's fantastic.
I appreciate that.
So one assumption is, is that you'll be with us for a little while in, in helping us move this through. One great assumption to what you do is setting these milestones in the form of a process flow chart, so that all the good intentions don't get lost in one meeting. We have a thing that we emerged with master milestones to try and recapture good ideas that got lost. I think it's critical that these, this process flow chart with milestones be part of what it is that comes from you, and I, I wholeheartedly hope that you're in our budget to, to see this through. The two questions. A word that hasn't been mentioned lately, I want you to tell me that St. Helena's population is, is accounted for in all that you've been doing. And the second question, I want, was curious whether, if Lake Taylor Middle School was that middle school that you talked about, 2016, 2017? That seems to fit in with some other things, master planning going on. So the two questions are, St. Helena, is there population in the, in the, in the demographics of that school that you had mentioned, you remember your first presentation? Can we handle that in, in what you see here? And would Lake Taylor Middle School be one possibility that would fit with the demographics that you see in the 2016, 2017? And now the dream.
Sure.
Optimize Maury, optimize Maury High School learning space, and I won't explain. Thanks.
I did? But believe it or not, I did. Let me talk to St. Helena very quickly. That area, that area will continue to be a concern of mine in this capital program for population. You know me, I speak frankly to you. That whole south of the river is concerning with the number of seats, St. Helena's condition of facility, capacity of facility, even size of the school, being able to offer comprehensive programs to St. Helena students. Look, it's going to continue in the fall. You're going to hear about it again, because I think it needs to continue to be stated. Look, I love what you're, what you're doing with Campastella. We all know that it's not enough. We do. And, but we appreciate our limitations, too. And so, we're, we're not critical of something that's good, because it's very good. We just need to do more for the, the south-of-the-river community to allow that to happen. Capacity-wise, program-wise, especially when you get to the western side of below the river. You know, we, we were kind of looking at things today, when, I'm going to transition right into that Lake Taylor. Actually, I have a bigger focus on Ruffner in that situation. I think that there's possibilities in that St. Charles corridor with the city plans and a school of Tidewater that we may think about a great configuration thing and allow that to happen. I think that could utilize Ruffner better in time. I think that that has to be, and also I think that could be a great programmatic bridge in that area that's needed. It doesn't do a whole lot as far as diversifying socioeconomic and, and that, because it's all kind of in the same boundary. We do have a little issue there because the far-western side of Tidewater doesn't exactly fit into Ruffner boundary. But those are ideas that we're, we're thinking about. Lake Taylor can come in the equation with that, I think. And so, but right now, I think that, you know, Ruffner can provide such a great opportunity for a lot of different reasons. It is, it is such a focal point when you come to downtown. And we, when I've talked to board members about, why isn't a school of opportunity for people coming in from Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Virginia Beach that work in Norfolk? There are so many great things that can happen there. I think you have a dynamic leader there, too. And so I think that Ruffner will be a part of discussion that we have, but Lake Taylor may come into the equation of that, because, again, trying to feed high poverty into high poverty and high poverty, we're done with that. We've got to figure out a different way to get around that, in that area. So that answers that.
No comment necessarily, I just wanted to get it out there because we've got to talk about it.
Thank you.
Amen, brother.
We know who you've been talking to.
Out-of-district transfers. So in, in your model of the phasing and the, the choice, have you all had more thought and conversation around board policy associated with out-of-district transfers? Because we know from the, some of the initial maps that you gave us that show the plotting of attendance, we know some of that deals with special needs, some of it is out-of-district. The Policy Committee has been reviewing data around out-of-district transfers, we know we have a, a lot of that. Because when you talk about the, the neighborhood school model, there are some who are able to pay a premium to move into a neighborhood of choice. There are others who might like their neighborhood, but not necessarily like their neighborhood school, and want to see other options. So what thoughts have you had, or will you have around the out-of-district transfer? Or is that too soon to talk about at this point?
A little bit of that answers, yes. It's kind of early to talk about it. But we have talked- It's kind of early to talk about it, but we have talked about that. You have a district that already has a lot of choice in it, that is kind of hidden underneath the surface. You know, you know, out-of-district transfers, you know, teacher transfers with students, which I, which I fully support with anywhere, I think that leads to good attraction for teachers. But you have that going on. So, but here's the thing, is that people that can't move into areas of choice now don't have that opportunity, because every area in the city's going to be an area of choice. That is more structured. And so I do think you will, you will revisit your transfer policy. I don't think there's any way around it. I think what happens in time is that as transfers start to get implemented, they grow, and they grow, and they grow, to a point where, hey, wait a minute, we've got to revisit this, and maybe clamp down some, maybe not. But I think that that's what happens, and most school districts that I see, an early transfer policy that's just grown, and grown, and grown. And frankly, the savvy survive. Those who are most savvy in any district around the country will know how to get to buildings. And so you want to make sure that you're providing the tools that every parent's savvy. That's, that's, I think, would be the goal.
My other question, on your process approach chart, evaluation of program effectiveness, and then decision tree based upon that. I think, I don't know if it fits in that initial 2015 to 2018 timeline, but we know we have configurations that are currently underway. But I would recommend, somewhere in your chart, you give us an idea of when you evaluate these, and if it needs to be tweaked, or if it needs to be a new program, you know, how you go about that process, and when you would look at it. You know, is it three years, is it five years? How long out do you get sufficient amount of data to be able to determine whether or not it's working?
And effective, okay.
Because in our high-stakes testing environment, you know, you get forced to make some changes based upon a small snapshot of data, and versus looking at the, the long haul and the big picture. So I think that's something we should build into the strategy.
Well, and it would be advantageous to work, you know, side by side with the board to determine what measures, what merit success in your division. Whether it's academic, which could be, whether it's safety, whether it's parent satisfaction, whether it's just increase in enrollment. There's a lot of factors that can happen there for success.
The other thing I think that would be good as part of our process approach is to invite our Planning Commission colleagues to be involved in these discussions, starting now with these community meetings. I think as they look at the city and planning what they do, when you mentioned Ruffner, and when we talk about St. Paul's corridor, and we talk about this corridor and that area, and as they're looking at the city as a whole, I think it's important for them to know where we're headed, so that we can be congruent, not incongruent, and perhaps the synergy is exponentially stronger for everybody. You know, they might come to the table with some good ideas that we've not heard that they're discussing yet.
Sure.
So I would recommend that we bring our Planning Commission colleagues to the table as early as possible, and I think that they would be welcome to that.
They actually broke the subject to one of the planning member commissioners already.
And I've kind of mentioned it as well.
Yeah, they're, they're on board with it.
Excellent.
Now, I was in a meeting there before I came here, and you know, the planning department right now is working on zoning initiative for the city, which is going to be like a three-year process.
Right.
And so we're looking at single-family home, multifamily, so forth, it would be a very good timing to align this with that, with that effort.
So I think, you know, when you come back and start the planning on the process, let's bring the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, let's bring the Planning Commission, let's bring their constituencies into the conversation, so that everyone has good collective thoughts together, and then no one's surprised, and no one's doing something adversely affecting something else, unintentionally.
And that's more often what occurs.
Right.
And may, and that's my cue to have Lee contact them for, if we can get shape files of planning and zoning, that we can align into the student data maps, too. That, that's a good start.
Sure.
Of collaboration there.
Yeah.
So you had me for two and a half hours, but that's all I got. And we can sit and chat about Alaska or anything, if you want, I don't.
I'm going to ask one question of Dr. King. Does his budget have for 2016 and 17, and 17 and 18, Mr. Whit, Tracy coming back?
At this point, it does not. I will have to, we can circle back to see what, because we, you know, the department looked at forecasting.
Right.
And I know that the planning that's necessary in terms of what the changes are going to look like, beginning to be projected.
Yep.
But how deep, I can't answer that at this point. But as far as going into next school year, yes.
And I'm looking at two or three.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Honey?
Couple of things, since we have a few minutes.
Should I have said that?
At the, at the two focus group meetings, Young Scholars consolidation came up. And then also, in your earlier slide, when we're dealing with Willoughby and Ocean View, you've mentioned students that were already accepted into Lakewood. So do you have any sense of what the Lakewood distribution is looking like, and both in terms of where people are coming from, and what the socioeconomic diversity may be?
I don't have, I have not been past that data. Dennis may have an initial idea, but I'm not sure how solid the data is yet.
Got that from Tommy, you know, where all those schools and the grade levels. There are two that are, would be projected to be attending Willoughby, planning on attending Lakewood next year, is what Tracy was talking about.
Yeah, I mean, overall.
So we can, yeah, we can reach out and then, because I'd like to get those kids geocoded as quickly as can, and get the demographic profile of that. As we talk to the, Tommy, is that right? We've asked him to be very, very forensic with his demographics, so we can get a good idea of what implications of choice does. And we hope that, and he's, he's like, absolutely, because we want to set this as a model for how we really investigate demographics and choice and selection, because it will influence how we do this.
I can say just from being on the, on SMT for them, that it's, it's very good. Very, as socioeconomically diverse as we can get, I want to say sixty, forty. And as far as getting kids from all parts of the city, we're doing that. So it's looking very good.
That's good.
And the Young Scholars, please.
It was brought up in the Young Scholar, as a part of the discussion about, about splitting the program, and what it's, how it, how it's impacted one school and the other. And again, I think that's part of the programmatic discussion at the elementary grade level, to feed this middle school level, to see if that's an effective way to do that. I think one of the things that is easy to do is say, wow, this really works, let's do it again somewhere. When sometimes that, we have to think about what that really does to what exists, and location and all that. And so I think it's something that, again, I want to be, I want to be very careful in our decision-making, that we don't cause something that is, that is a bit of tension right now out there. And again, I, we don't shy away from it. There is, there is some dissatisfaction about what happened, and that's okay, we just deal with it. Now, what do we do about it? So it's very important, our primary discussions, and then moving forward into the fall recommendation, what will happen to programs, and in this case, like Young Scholars. So that was a point that was brought up, and I think that we're going to address it.
You had mentioned that we were on the cusp of initiating a CTE high school, and we've just put it into our budget to start planning for it, or in our capital improvement plan, to start planning for it. When you're coming back with the proposals, you had mentioned Lake Taylor Middle School. And right now, the proposal is for it to be at Lake Taylor High School. And I know that we had mentioned in the past, or you had mentioned how the Booker T. Washington would be a choice that should be considered, and I, I think we've kind of, I'm not sure if we've moved off of that track, but in your planning.
I've been told to move off that track, so.
I was going to say some.
That's fair, so.
While, while you are looking at the planning for Lake Taylor Middle, and how everything might fit into place, since that appears to be coming online in a real way, I think it would be good to, to look at the feeder patterns for that. As you had, in the, in the graph that you had made with the choices from elementary school to middle school to high school, what options we can offer children with that in mind.
Yeah, and, because that is an initiative, again, I'm very, very excited that you guys are going forward on it, for whatever it is, but, this idea, because, but I think it's going to take intentional planning, all the way from initial programming, and again, using the programming effort to design the school. Don't let the design drive the programming effort, that's critical here. And then, looking back, all the way from kindergarten to grade eight, and how we get kids really interested in a program that is diverse and will prepare them for the future. Man, I, this is a, this is a great opportunity to get in front of this. I'm, I'm probably going to need more direction about your guys' thoughts on timelines, where you think it's going to fall into place, what funding's going to be, and so, so we can really put this in order the right way.
Well, thank you. I want you to feel compelled to make up another twenty-five minutes.
I don't feel compelled to.
But thank you very much, and we are, we're moving forward in a very strong and positive way. We appreciate your leadership and support in this matter.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Final thing for our open formal session is our board matters, and I don't know if you've had an opportunity to take a look at the agenda plans for the next work session. Only other matter in addition to that, that I have, would be just two things. One, could we go ahead and look at the date, a date for that public hearing, the final week of April, for Willoughby? Or do we, something they want the administration to plan and, and take the lead on that? I think it would be good for some of us who could be there, though, to, board members, just to kind of hear the, you know, concerns of the, of the, go ahead, Rodney.
Is the, Janelle?
Public airing.
Is the agenda on, on board docs? Or in the tree?
It's the May 6th.
Yeah.
And so then I would just ask Dr. King, that, you know, as soon as you all decide on that, they, you know, just let the board know, whichever, whoever else could be there for the week of, the final week of April, the committee meeting with Willoughby.
Yeah.
Monday the 27th, Tuesday the 28th, Thursday the 30th. Any recommendations?
I vote for the 28th. Or the 29th.
Yeah, I would admit, I mean, I would.
You can't do 29th.
Yeah, but.
Do we, I'm asking this just because I have on here that there's a Civic League meeting, a Riverfront Civic League. Should we check and make sure that their Civic Leagues aren't meeting at the same time as the public?
It's almost impossible.
I know.
Because there's Civic League meetings every night.
Well, Willoughby and Ocean View, just those two. They probably have already had them.
Riverfront is, is, towards Coroner's.
Right, no, I'm, what I'm saying is, if we're going to be doing a public hearing, let's just make sure it doesn't coincide with their Civic League meeting, because this would probably be an event that those same people would probably go to.
Or contact their Civic League.
Yeah.
And then combine it together.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Like, we've done that, we've done that with Large Mom, I believe.
Yes, that was ideally, you got a good.
Because they're already going to the meeting. That just, that's the agenda of the meeting.
So I'm just going to, I would just, yeah, please. Okay, very well. And then Sam will let us know.
Is this a date we're choosing that we're all going to be somewhere?
Yeah, I know we don't all have to be. I think it would be good for a few of us to get to make it, not, you know, necessarily that we're all there.
I'll just say when I'm available.
Right, I'm with you.
I have a big want to make sure that we don't lose sight of, and I, I need to know about the Maury learning environment, I need to know where we stand on that. And I need to know it, you know, I don't want it to slip away and end up in mid-June.
I thought we have a, don't we have a retreat slash work sessions designed for that, the last Wednesday in May?
You're talking about, that's going to be collapsed into the master milestone?
Yeah, I thought that was part of that.
Didn't know that.
Yes, that was my understanding, because that's considered one of the milestones.
Okay, so now it's mine.
Now it's what?
Now it's my understanding. I just want to make sure that doesn't slip away from us.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing is, is that we want to have an opportunity to review the agenda for Thursday, I mean, for Friday?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's it. Okay. All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
Did you want to go over any of this, Warren?
Sam shot seventy yesterday.
I'd be happy to give you a little briefing on, on, on one of the items that you have there. But it's, it, Dr. Robinson, you want to try and give them a heads up on, on this one here?
There's a preliminary facility study performed at the Calvary School, and we're trying to figure out which programs can fit in there. We were looking at the Madison Alternative School, CSEP, and/or the trade school at, at Oakwood. And open, and open campus, that's right. And unfortunately, it can't fit all three.
Well, might be able to, yes.
Might be able to fit all three?
Yes, Dr. Land is investigating, and will get back with us about the possibility of it fitting.
Interesting, okay.
Remember, right after that, we had, we had a meeting together for Student Services. And the good thing about it is, she hasn't finished her study yet.
So it would be at least, hopefully fit at least two of those programs in there, not all three.
The other item is something that Dr. Robinson and I have heard for several months now. One of the concerns that has arisen from the building of these schools is a very interesting word called value engineering, and the changes in the, it's called change orders, that are occurring. So our people are making sure that any changes in the direction of construction of those schools aren't affecting program. Remember, the letter that we got said, you take care of program, we'll take care of financing. Right now, some of the change orders seem to be worrisome to us, particularly in regards to safety. So that other item, each month, remember, Dr. Robinson and I being on that committee, anyone is welcome to sit in my place during the next one. It's very important that change orders that are based on value engineering, that's a tricky word, don't cut into our program desires.
So two things, that did have, have the opportunity to have a conversation with the manager and with Mr. Bron Williams. And two things that was made clear in the meeting, one, is that no changes are affecting educational program or quality, and two, that Ron would be happy to come to any of our meetings and brief the board, which I thought was a.
I think it's excellent. I just want to make sure our people are there to validate that.
Right.
Meaning, Mr. Smith and the folks in our department, particularly in regards to safety and placement of.
Sure.
Security cameras and all.
One thing I would add is that we do have an update on May 6th regarding PPEA, which I think it's intended for us to have the opportunity to discuss the construction. And that is when Dr. Thornton was available, he wasn't going to be here today due to vacation, that's why it wasn't discussed at today's meeting. So we'll be sure to make sure, potentially, Ron Williams can come to that meeting.
Can we also get a little bit on Maury?
PPEA is what we're talking about. Maury's in late May.
Okay.
May 27th.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. So at the appropriate time, I'd like to get just a better understanding of what we are evaluating in terms of Calvary Christian School. We just went through this conversation with Dejean Richter about, you know, diversity, branding, and so forth. So just like to get an understanding of, I understand the property needs, but I'd like to get a better sense of the programmatic needs.
Well, that's what we're trying to ascertain, and that's why this might have been a little premature to discuss.
Just wanted you to know it's in process.
Yes, we're processing that out.
That's what I said, future time.
Exactly, yeah.
And then, on today's meeting, I know we added Mr. Richter to come and present to us, and I know in the, we had moved away from having informal meeting and the business meeting on the same day, and I just hope we don't drift back into that, into that model.
We drifted back a while ago.
Yeah, I was, I didn't want us to drift back then either, because, you know, these eight, eight-hour meetings are.
I concur.
One thing, Dr. Robinson, after we had our meeting, I went in with Dr. Landz, and I told her what I wanted her to come back and give me an answer on. And so she, she knows that I want the, these programs to fit. And since, since sometimes programs spread out to the space that you give them, you know, it's, if you say, you know, you've got 55 feet, go ahead and, and live in it, sometimes they, they get, they grow that way. So I have a feeling we're going to fit.
All right.
Everybody understood that tonight?
You did understand it. And we have enough time to fit in dinner now.
Right.
And, and reasonable transition time, so let's take our recess, and we'll be ready to start right, right at 7:00 PM, promptly at 7:00, all right? Thank you.